It's you by yourself, haven't you?
Oh.
My son will.
The back row.
That's great, he went to the peanut gallery.
I think it'll be a while.
Well, it's just the rally show up. Okay. Rest of pool for the Patrick Henry Library to host a Hispanic Heritage Month Fiesta on Saturday at 12:04. 1:00 PM, 4:00 PM, Row Walkway with a... Yeah, yeah. Green Day, about October 11th. I'm sorry. Okay, what?
Hi.
You were over there before.
I was, yeah. She's, she's back. Hi, Laura Nichols, Sergeant, Patrick Henry Library.
Number one.
How are you? Good. Every October we celebrate the Hispanic Heritage Month. And this year we'd like to take the celebration outside, so we're gonna host a Fiesta in our little courtyard. Our intention is to maybe... Beat it up a bit, we're hoping that we could respectfully request from the village to allow us to set up some tables in the Row Walkway.
Yeah.
Or some grass, so.
Absolutely. Nice. It looks lovely.
That sounds nice.
Motion two second. Everybody, have a good night music.
Uh, there'll be music. We hope to have some sort of mariachi band in the front, which we had probably two years, a couple of years ago. And then some sort of DJ in the courtyard. I don't suspect it'll be super noisy, but obviously we'll adhere to any requests that you have when you're starting.
Yeah, let's talk.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, um... I'd like to make a motion to Senate Public Attorney, August 25th. Consider the upside parcels of River Avenue from the DQ business to see residents on both sides of River Avenue, north of the railroad tracks, so point. On the east side, three parcels, three parcels south of Main Street, which actually brings you up to Calhoun's.
Correct.
I mean, that's only stated in the book, and south of the River Avenue School excluding any properties with current applications pending. The upside change is to eliminate the non-performing commercial uses, meaning the properties that are formerly with current uses. Um, it's a hard part. Right now, it's DQ business.
But the vast majority, if not almost exclusive, are non-performing properties.
Residential, right. Not for residential uses.
Correct.
Not even not for business uses, they're not performing residential uses. It would not affect either industrial...
Yeah, that would be a problem.
In both the east and the west of those properties, those are still industrial. Public Attorney, August 25th, motion. Second.
Second.
Okay. Uh, no P A D, just Chamber.
Chamber, why?
You want a D Chamber?
Good evening, uh, I'll be brief, I know we've had a, you know, we're going, we have a lot of business to conduct.
So before you, before you kind of, the, the meeting with the double Chamber, I thought very well.
Oh, and we thank, no, thank you for coming, uh, even despite the busy schedule. Uh, it was a great meeting, the Velport Chamber, the Patrick Chamber yearly get-together, uh, and we had our, the mayor was our guest speaker and, uh, did a fantastic job and, uh, we really appreciate it.
I believe there was some synergy that we had in the matter, of course.
Yep, absolutely, absolutely, it's a good synergy between our communities and we want to keep that going. Uh, I just want to highlight, you know, we did run a Father's, uh, excuse me, yes, a Father's Day promotion, uh, for duck tickets, and the winner was none other than the President of the Fire Island National Seashore, David Anson, uh, the Friends of the Fire Island National Seashore, so congratulations to him. Um, this weekend was a great weekend for the riverfront, the weather was beautiful, uh, they were really thriving, uh, and they had a nice summer solstice celebration, I hear all the feedback that I got, uh, received has been very positive. I'm hoping everybody did the same thing. Uh, I do know that they did something different this year, they did a mass reliving of these Chinese lanterns that I did get to witness and it was certainly a spectacle and I hope they can do it again. But certainly, you know, we want to make sure the feedback, if there was any, uh, issue that that would get caused, and I would certainly pass that on.
I was at Billings, I had.
Billings?
I heard nothing about that.
From Calabria to Billings, huh?
That's not local.
From that Monday to Friday morning, I went to nine times on Saturday. I didn't know whether I was getting to go to bed every day.
Um, and also this weekend was another, another successful, we had this one value a little bit, was our 2020, uh, art exhibit and cultural diversity celebration, it was a real, uh, mass bringing together of a lot of different parts of our communities and a lot of different cultures in our communities, I thank, uh, Trusty Keys, Trusty Verb, and Trusty Devlin for joining us, uh, and celebrating with that, with us this past weekend.
David, yeah, because the note to that, I mean, if you were in that kind of art space, we'd be having the photos.
Yes, and I was gonna bring, uh, that's actually on my list. Uh, Steve, uh, Steve from the Greater Patrick Historical Society couldn't make it, but he did want me to do that, starting on July the 2nd. Uh, there's gonna be a great photo exhibition at Art Space Gallery of all these beautiful old Patrick photos. It's the same exhibition that was in Port Jefferson over the winter, and it's now probably gonna make its Patrick debut and, uh, I really, if you haven't got a chance to see some of the, the pictures and how it's presented, uh, you know, I really, uh...
It's how age is fifteen.
Do you think?
It can see age, it's about fifteen, fourteen, eighteen.
Really? I didn't know that.
You're picking on me?
No, David, I would never do that.
We like it up.
We're gonna hug it.
That's why Mark's in the back. And mine next.
All right, um, continue on, just some of our other upcoming events. Uh, very excited, Family Fun Night is fast approaching on Friday, July the 11th. Um, it's, you know, we're gonna have, uh, you know, uh, some rides and games for the kids, some musical entertainment. This year we've condensed the gist to the eastern part of, uh, of Main Street as not to burden our, uh, riverfront businesses and some of the traffic in town, but it's still gonna be the same great event, I encourage everybody to please come down. Uh, we have another new grand opening coming up to the Chamber, Long Island Furniture Bazaar, uh, just outside the village in East Patrick. We'll be doing their grand opener July the 10th, and we always welcome our village officials, whether, uh, they're inside the village or not. I still think, still want to see the mayor of Patrick, I hope they, I hope they can come down for us. Uh, and that's really everything that we got upcoming, uh, with the Chamber until the next meeting, but I do know there's a couple of matters, uh, that are Chamber related, I don't know if you wanted to grab them now, or if you wanted to wait till the appropriate time.
David, why don't, uh, why don't you talk about the ballet part?
Okay, um, before, I believe, before the, the Village Board is an agreement that would allow a ballet service in a municipal parking lot. Uh, I'm not sure, and the attorney Egan can answer this question, is, what, the agreement is specific to a certain parking lot, or is it a Chamber? Okay, so, uh, the plan, okay, uh, just to let the public know, uh, the plan right now as it stands is to try out a ballet service and see what kind of an impact that might make, uh, in freeing up some parking spaces, and also utilizing, uh, parking areas that are underutilized and not, you know, and not used like they should be used, so, uh, drive it around the village with, uh, a potential ballet vendor. Uh, we did identify the parking lot behind Bravo as a lot that certainly is sizable, uh, but is very underutilized in the evening. Nobody parks there, it's always empty, a lot of people who are new to the community might not feel comfortable enough, knowing the area enough to, to park back there. So the plan would be using that as a ballet, a place to bring ballet cars. Uh, the other part of the proposal would be that the, uh, the pickup station would be at the parking lot side of what's called the Row Walkway, the walkway between, uh, the library and, uh, and Stanley's Furniture. Uh, and we're gonna see how it goes, it's something that we wanted to try for about three or four months and, and see how it goes, maybe we expand it, it'll just be on Fridays and Saturday nights, um, and, uh, we, you know, they're ready, the one ballet company we're talking to is ready to go tomorrow, if we gave you okay. There is another ballet company that has approached us that we'd like to check their prices as a comparison, to make sure we're, uh, you know, making the best bargain for everybody, and, and we would like to make this a free service, uh, that's what we're attempting to do. A lot of the restaurants are very excited about the idea and are willing to contribute to make it happen, so as it stands now, uh, we're hoping that it'll be free, that's not been finalized yet, but if there is a fee, it would be very, it would be a very small fee.
How would you direct people so that they would know that the ballet was at the back of that walkway?
Well, it would probably be, uh, we'd have to think about maybe some sandwich board signs, maybe, or some kind of signs. But mostly it'll be the restaurants, I think it'll be more getting out through the restaurants, when people go into it, they might not know about it when they go there, but the next time they come back, they'll know about it, because they'll, you know, the restaurants are gonna be educating their patrons. I mean, certainly the restaurant, uh, people who are frequenting our restaurants would be the most likely users of that, and I would think through the restaurants is how we'll get it out, through word of mouth, through media, you know, I don't, you know, we're signed to death in this community, adding more signs, certainly, as, you know, they get lost, it's kind of white noise when you add more signs, so, we're really probably more word of mouth than media.
I think you have more parking if you go east on Terrance Street, behind Burlington, and across the street from there is a lot that's never used.
Yeah, I mean, we'd like to investigate more areas, I mean, that certainly that one stood out, uh, as definitely one that's, uh, very empty in the evening. Uh, they're telling us they can get a forty percent, uh, extra yield above and beyond what the parking spaces are in that spot.
Oh, by the way, they pull it in.
Exactly, by the way they pull it in, so it, uh, increases our parking, uh, and it uses a lot that no one's using right now.
Today is Friday and Saturday.
We'll be just right now, right now the plan is for Friday and Saturday.
Was it 4:00 PM to 2:00 AM?
Uh, we were talking about, exactly, 4:00 PM to 2:00 AM, correct.
And, uh, restaurants will encourage employees to...
Absolutely, actually I was just talking to Laura Nichols from the, the library about it, and she was saying that the biggest users might be the employees at the library, when, when, when it happens, so, I think employees would get...
We put on the website, a little advertising, yeah, that's...
Yeah, I think the word will, would get out pretty quickly, once it was, uh, put out there.
Have you considered, uh, during theater performances, to do the same thing?
Absolutely, and we've talked to the theater, actually the Gateway's very interested, it may be adding that service other days that the, the theaters perform, absolutely. You know, like, again, we like to find other areas of other parking lots to, to use. Uh, one concern right now is the, uh, the restaurants on, um, or West Main Street are concerned about, they're a little bit farther from where the pickup drop-off point is. And we were thinking about maybe having a second spot, and me, I think we didn't, were discussing the idea of when that, that parcel of Tri-Tech is using, uh, for their, uh, you know, workers, uh, that maybe that will become available as a second, another lot that we then...
Maybe behind Bargain Bill?
Yes, exactly, behind Bargain Bill, to maybe have another, uh, uh, ballet station on, you know, off of the Church Street lot, and then, and bring then those cars over there, and then, you know, this way there would be, uh, you know, more use for those people, those restaurants as well. But, you know, I guess, you know, you start, we'll see how that one works, we're hoping that it'll expand and become something that's permanent.
Uh, yeah, I'm gonna make a motion to approve, that's the second.
More action?
Uh, I'm requesting approval, authorizing the mayor to execute a license agreement between the Village and the Chamber of Commerce, uh, to provide that...
Motion second.
Second.
Bye, bye. Okay.
And again, just to be clear, if there were other place lots that we want to utilize, we have to enter it to a different set, uh, similar agreement.
Six months as a pilot program.
Six. Perfect.
Uh, it's in six months, we can, will we come back and vote on it yet?
Well, it was not sent, yes. We actually added in two additional six-month extensions, so it could go to eighteen months total.
So the Chamber Board, Chamber wants to extend it, they can just extend it for six months without having to go through a rule from the Board of Directors?
Correct, and we could also say no, right?
Correct.
Exactly.
That's great.
The extensions are on the card expression, the option is not working.
So it doesn't work?
No, if, if we want to turn it down, they have the option to renew, they can just exercise the option, and if we don't object to it, it happens.
So if you object to it?
Next, right. Don't object to it.
All right.
Thank you, thank you very much, I do want to give kudos out to our Vice President, Don Turnbull, who's, uh, the Chairperson of our Parking Committee, who really spearheaded the...
As long as we've got you in the hot seat there.
Okay.
Let's do Midnight, no, Midnight on Main Street.
Absolutely, I was gonna ask if we could do that, um...
Since it's my birthday, I think we should definitely do it immediately.
Oh, geez.
It's Tom's birthday, uh, but, uh, as the community and the village knows, last year, we entertained the idea of maybe doing a, a ball drop celebration to usher in the New Year on Main Street, uh, and we're, we're gonna title it Midnight on Main Street. Uh, because of the, the time we brought up, it was like the late September, early October, by the time we even brought it up, we just realized the time to really put that together, uh, and do it right just wasn't there, and we suspended, uh, moving forward with it. What the idea, hopefully, the following year that we would do it, so, uh, now that we're in the middle of the year, uh, you know, we're getting to that point where you really, we're gonna be seriously doing something with it, uh, this is the time we gotta really start planning for it. So, uh, I, we're letting, oh, I'm sorry.
This is, this is probably an interesting track, Jerry, you agree with this all, not all?
Absolutely, and that's why Jerry's here, Jerry is actually chairing the committee, uh, our Midnight on Main Street committee.
Cherry, you're gonna call me.
I know, but...
Jerry says, Cherry is... So, uh, uh, he's been helping, you know, he's been part of the planning of things that we've so far. So right now what we're asking for, and I, again, this is just, uh, we're putting a big wish list out there and see what we can do, is that we, the streets closures would be from 11, uh, from 10 o'clock to 1 o'clock, uh, the same parameters that we normally ask for, like for the live after five, which would be Maple Avenue to West Avenue, uh, on Ma- Main Street, and Church Street to Oak Street on Ocean Avenue.
I have, I have Maple to Railroad, I'm gonna change it to West.
Oh, no, Maple, actually Maple to Railroad is fine, that, that's my mistake, saying West, Maple to Railroad, it would be fine. Um, the idea is that we'd probably set one stage off, it wouldn't be in the four corners, it would be off to either the east or the west, just to have some musical entertainment, uh, the only vendors that then would be outside would be for Hot Chocolate, maybe a vendor selling some of the light-up toys or, uh, noise makers or hats and stuff like that, there'd be no alcohol sold outside, we would not be asking for any alcohol sold outside, uh, the whole idea and concept behind this is that it would give something for people already in town that wanted something, uh, unique to do also, that they could just walk outside from their places of, uh, entertainment to come out to the street, and also offer something for residents, you know, as we are learning, and as we heard tonight, uh, we're, our businesses are surrounded by residents that are within walking distance of our, of our community, and, you know, a lot of people on New Year's Eve don't have, don't have anything to do, or are looking for something to do, and for people at home, I think it would be a great alternative for them, uh, to get out of the house for a few hours in the evening and celebrate the New Year with the community. So, uh, I did also suggest in my letter to you that what we're tailoring this is, is similar to what Kingston, New York did. Uh, Kingston, New York, uh, had a very similar celebration in their downtown, uh, and if you look at the pictures and the videos, it kind of gives you an idea of what it could be and what the wall looks like, it really doesn't take much, it's just a, a pulley system on a stick, uh, it doesn't have to be that fancy, and it still can be as spectacle as that video showed. It was a pretty simple wall, it was a simple procedure, but it was still, thousands came down and enjoyed it.
Kingston, though, the, the video material in there, that's very instructive, they must have thousands of people. Uh, they're very similar to us, they're, they're about twice as big as we are in population, about three times what we are, a little bit denser than them. But the, uh, the event, we're gonna need all the restaurants, you know, flying special, special food, you know, lots of promotion.
And that's what we, we, that, that, if we got the approval, the next step for us is that we'd want to talk to all the restaurant owners and see if they would coordinate what they do, uh, with what we would want to do.
Also check with Gateway, because they have their show in the park.
Yeah, do anything.
Absolutely.
So this is basically, you approve the plan, come back?
Well, exactly, we still want, just we know that the street closures are okay, that we know that we could plan it at that location.
So, uh...
Motion two.
Motion, request approval to close Main Street from Maple to Railroad, and Ocean Avenue from Church Street north to Oak Street, uh, for Midnight on Main, uh, for December 3rd, first, 2014, to January 1st, 2015, from 10:00 PM to 1:00 AM, that's a motion.
Second.
Okay.
All right.
Okay. Excellent.
Thank you, and Trusty Verb as the liaison to the Chamber, and I know, uh, Trusty Hilton is like the special events, uh, Trusty and Chair of, uh, special events, I'd like to invite him to be part of our planning process, and, you know, I'll invite you to those committee meetings, so there's continued to be good synergy with the village as we plan this along, and keep everybody up to date on what's going on. All right, and the last thing I'm just gonna talk about is, uh, the Parking Committee, um, we're having a meeting this Wednesday, by Friday I'll have a letter to everybody with the proposal that we have, how to manage the free spots, I know that's something the village has been waiting for very patiently. I think we're pretty much ready to put the period on that, uh, eye, uh, at the meeting on Wednesday. All right, unless anybody's got any questions, everybody there?
Thank you.
Thank you.
And because of seniority...
10:00 AM, 10:00 AM at the Chamber office.
Because of seniority, you're gonna kick you out of the way.
I appreciate that, man. This night is my bedtime.
David, we were really hoping to...
Everybody comes here and prays for the job that you've held, and comes to the village and practices. It's amazing, but that's corn, that's... My captain came out the other day and he was amazed, this kid was dancing at the theater, the church. I come here to praise you, and not praise you.
I was in Italy.
What's that?
I was in Italy when you called, so that's why you called me back.
Okay. Tianti is cheaper, five dollars, the best bridge in the world. You decided to do the parking lot behind my store, my son's store, on a Monday. These three, four weeks is my business, as far as volume. That day I lost $10,000 in sales, potential. Next day was closed until 12 o'clock, we also took a drop, that's all right. Now I hear that you're gonna do the other side of the parking lot, this coming week or next week?
No, your parking lot is done, you've done.
My parking lot done? Okay, let's get to the parking lot.
The vacay's done at 11:00 on Tuesday?
What?
The vacay's done at 11:00?
The whole morning we should shut, so you took a hit last week. But I'll work with the village, you know that, do anything you want, ask, but now is the bad part. I am thoroughly against parking meters behind our store, we have tons of customers, and you can ask my son, because I don't stay here all day, he's 24/7. Even I try to put money into that parking field, and I'm like computer illiterate, and I said, screw it, I want to know how to do, how to do without the car there. Take it, I'll pay for the ticket. The people come, are pissed. Please, do not put parking meters behind us, please, I'm begging you. We have a lot of older customers who come in for their bras and foundations and stuff, they don't understand computers, gotta push this button, that button. Hey, even, uh, Michael Julian, and he's computer sense, uh, illiterate, he gotta take it because he didn't put the, push the button twice. You must have heard about that. Okay, now, let's be reasonable, we need more parking on Oak Street, I've said this before, you know, I said before, we've given Tri-Tech the world, they can do anything wrong, anything right, they have the world. God damn it, it's about time you felt for the people who pay taxes here, the stores on Main Street, and East Main Street, and West Main Street. You have to divide more parking, easily, I said to this you two years ago, North, North on O Street, get the landlords in those properties there, take over the parking field, stripe it, put it together, you'll gain at least 50 to 75 more spaces.
You're talking about the, uh...
I'm talking about behind Esposito's building, all that area, all the way to the nightclub, all the way around there. That can be done easily, it's agreement, you're gonna maintain it, you take it over, the village maintains it, stripe it, but lay it out correctly. That's the only thing you can help Oak Street with.
So you, you had to sell your computers back, we missed it.
Oh, and Masonic Building should have gone, should have gone, I told you that.
65, they sold it.
How much?
Right, you have to 65, they sold it.
So I'm...
You came to be with it, and we called on it, gone.
And those guys, they, the few guys that worked there outside all day, they don't know, it's a hot place, you know, it's made of cold people from, I guess, stock or whatever. But that's the only way you're gonna help us, the machines, the, the, uh, your parking machines? No, and I'm the thought, machines on Main Street, because to keep the, the store owners off of. But then behind me, no, it's a killer, killer for me, for Colony Shop, the bank, around the corner, nobody get around. You go there, and you see how it is, but please, don't do anything, oh, I must thank the village for the help when they have the, uh, at the theater, the kids dancing, the guys have done a great job, uh, I got mad one morning, I came down here...
And who did you yell at?
You.
Did you apologize?
No, and she turned her, I apologized, and she turned me over to, uh, the fellow, Jim, and Jim was giving, he said, you really deserved the ticket. I said, give me one, I don't care, and he walked out, and he tried to tell me, you know, you gotta be nicer to the guy, why, they're getting paid, they can take a little abuse once in a while.
No, come on, eh, that's not fair.
No, I'm, I'm pretty good to those guys.
They don't, they shouldn't, uh, just, I just want to say they shouldn't, they get abused from anybody.
Well, we're taking abuse from...
No, I'm just saying, just in general...
We're taking abuse for the theater, and we're taking abuse for anything else that's done that parking field, and we won't want any meters.
But those guys aren't the ones who deserve these.
Oh, no, I know that.
Bring it here and give it to us.
Yeah, I know, thank you. Okay, thank you for the early, not going over messages. How'd I do, Mark? Oh, why not? Tell me how I did.
Tell him to talk to Deidre.
Oh, that's another question.
You left.
Give me a break, Gregor. I have nothing to write here. Thank you very much. Keith said everything.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, uh, trustees, board members, and ladies and gentlemen, I do have a little bit of reports. So, encouraging is actually another one of us, a guy, actually ends an annual workforce, uh, no success to the program. These are people on social services that came to work for us, and they're working off their, their, their benefit, actually. What we really did was give them something on a resume, some training background, um, some, you know, working in a workforce kind of environment, which some of them never really had, uh, and this fellow did with so successful at that he was another one who actually named a regular job, and he did all social services, and they split themselves in his hands, so pretty far out. Um, you may have noticed that Lake and North Ocean have been paved at the Tri-Tech project, I'm sure, especially late, what I messed up was the silver lining, he says, it's looking good. And, uh, every now and then I get a question about the bike racks, we're actually gonna get some quotes on having an outside contract to sell bike racks. It's just, um, you know, with what we have going on staff and why is it EPW, um, probably the cheapest, cheapest way to make a decent price on a bike. Tonight for the CDA, I'm requesting approval to increase the salary of taken pulse of CDA to $20.40 an hour, that's a 2% non-union. Employee increase, taken is, um, I guess you call it social worker, works at our CDA office maybe four days, four hours a week, usually Tuesday morning. Um, has been a great value to the CDA and to the village in assisting seniors with Medicaid applications, losing home applications, and, you know, Social Security benefits, anything, any questions that you may have about, particularly for seniors, and should be great benefit to us. I'm requesting approval to move the salary to $20.40.
Motion, second. All right.
Thank you, I'm requesting approval tonight toward the bid, you have a pretty thick package, which may or may not look confusing, it's really not confusing in terms of... I'm requesting approval towards the bid for drainage curb, sidewalk, and roadway projects within the village, as per the recommendation of J. Holtsmacher. Um, you can see in the patch, this will allow us to, you know, sometimes you just have one smaller job to do, you don't have to go to three posts, companies to give different methods of paving and cement work, and, and so if we could do a road cheaper, we're gonna go to the company who gives the lowest price, uh, for doing that method, so that's why there's so many pages on there, it's a little confusing, sorry, but this will allow us to get it, and break just one phone call, you know, start working off accounting contracts, and so I'm requesting approval to work that bit.
Second. All right.
Thank you, requesting approval to hire island industrial boilers to supply and install water service for ban shell, water fountain, hose bid, and irrigation and show front park at cost of $53,000, you may remember I spoke a couple of weeks ago about that, necessity to instill develop these, uh, reduce pressure dome melt, um, which will reduce any contaminants in the backflow of the water, and plus is necessary to actually carry the water closer to creek, um, this has to, we need this, for the museum, so.
You also need some kind of water authority?
Well, yeah, well, yeah, that's, that's the next step, this is the next step to get the, there's some kind of water authority, um, I would suspect that by first thing in the morning, you're gonna be in the other phone, you, you make plenty of phone calls to the water authority, alerting them that, you know, this is gonna happen, like, we're gonna need them right down there.
But isn't this, this is based upon their...
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry, yeah, this is a mandate from them, yeah.
A mandate on some kind of work, some kind of, uh...
Yeah, that, yeah, that's correct. This is a mandate from them, so this has to be done. Anyway, one way or the other, out of our shop, this would have been for the majority of us. Um, so that's a request at a cost not to exceed fifty-three thousand dollars.
Motion to accept. Or second.
Second. Aye. Thank you. In line with that, this is required. Requesting approval to pay a tapping fee to Suffolk County Water Authority for the amount of six thousand two hundred seventy dollars. The above mentioned installation actually from Park.
Second.
Thank you. Requesting approval to hire Jayco Construction Corporation to remove existing handicap ramps and supply and install new handicap ramps at South Ocean Avenue and Terrace Street at cost of nine thousand four hundred ninety-sixty-seven dollars.
Second.
Requesting approval to hire Jayco Construction Corporation to supply and install curb saw and hook cables on the north side of Terrace Street in South Ocean Avenue East to the entrance of the library lot at a cost not to exceed eighteen thousand dollars. You've seen the area that we did do, that they did, um, and really would make better sense to just complete that.
Second.
How long is that? Could I ask for motion? Might as well get to what's on?
Let's say it's eight oh five, and then they go.
It looks nice.
It does. Jayco, they, uh, no, they do these Main Street. They create the work, they do the individual job, they know the building very well. So I'd like to work on that.
Motion to accept. Or third.
I have two questions. I have two reservations to make about the East Main Street project.
The, um, I think we have all the markets for the lights.
They just finished...
Yeah, I'm just finishing the prep, this morning. Actually, I finished this sort of proposal, which popped to my head in this morning, and I know the one, the way the market for life for the gap, it's, uh, financial, and it should be, yeah, by the end of the year.
So what does we do on the two islands?
Yeah.
It's that, it's that, you're special. But the city of LA would be a place to...
I think the benches got the other one too.
The benches, yes, the benches. The benches, the, it's all right.
And the walk.
Anything else?
Uh, no, I mean, that's all I have.
Just a police.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, ladies and gentlemen. Tonight I have a request for approval of a couple of promotions in public safety. The first one is Nicholas Zambelli, and that would be the Senior Public Safety Officer Number One, which is equivalent to the chief. Mr. Zambelli, he's been a part of public safety since nineteen ninety-four. He virtually oversees all matters, um, having to do with public safety, and he works very closely with the SCPD to make sure that everything runs smoothly when we have events. This is his only job commitment, so he's available twenty-four-seven. So, uh, it's without hesitation, I recommend that he be promoted to the rank of Senior Public Safety Officer Number One, uh, which is also equal to the rank of chief. And this promotion will involve just, um, a dollar twenty-six per hour of what he currently makes. So I'd like to make that motion to, uh, figure out the motion.
Motion. Second. Aye.
Uh, the next promotion we have in line is for Alexander Calstel. Uh, he also, he's been, uh, involved with, um, this department since nineteen ninety-two, um, and he's gone through the ranks as well, and, uh, he's, um, you know, uh, he's an excellent role model, a training officer for the younger guys, and, uh, this position, uh, would be Senior Public Safety Officer Number Two, which is also equivalent to the captain. So I'd like to make that a motion that we accept this promotion, and that is at one more dollar per hour of what he currently makes.
It's a motion. Second. Second.
Aye.
Um, well, I've gone out. Sixty, uh, years.
Do the letter, Fred.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. He's still on. But Andrew. And, uh, he and Nick are going to talk, do a good job. And, uh, the promotions that will deserve, the promotions that will lead also to...
At this time, I'd like to request approval to hire Paul Robar as a part-time housing inspector, fifteen dollars per hour. This is just gonna be a part-time position. He won't be needed all the time, but, uh, with the upcoming season vacations and people can take off also in the winter time. So, uh, it's a much-needed, um, position. I spoke with Pete Saras today, and, uh, he said he'd like that to be effective immediately. So I'd like to make a motion to, uh, fire Paul Robar as a part-time housing inspector.
Second.
Aye.
Uh, the next thing I have on the agenda is, um, a little discussion on, um, the requirements for sidewalk encumberment dining permits. Senior Inspector, uh, Pete Saras, he's come up with a fifteen-point criteria to, uh, that they have to meet to have this permit. I could go through the whole thing right now, but I spoke with the mayor in line today, um, councillor Egan, Pete Saras as well, and, uh, there's just a few things we have to iron out, uh, as to when the doors should be opened and closed, and at what time. We're trying to have the time limit on it, but i- if we do that, and you have a beautiful night, and it's nine o'clock at night, and we haven't closed the doors at nine o'clock, then they're gonna lose out on all that time for people to dine outside after nine, so we decided not to do that, but we still have to sit down with, uh, councillor Egan, the mayor, myself, uh, Senior Inspector Saras, and we're gonna have a meeting with the business owners, because they're really gonna be the ones who are affected, you know, as to what time we ask them to close. The problem is, is the noise level at a certain time. It has, and, and that is being addressed. I mean, they are down there watching, uh, you know, the noise level and all that, so these are things that we got to iron out before we can actually pass the resolution.
What other, were there, what else is, uh, is concerned?
Basically, is the noise factors, uh, now that you have, uh, it's going around.
Oh.
How do you, how do you manage that, whether it's music or whether it's just voices, I'm just saying, that's all. And really, what, what, what time should it take us? And check, check up. Whether it's for service food, drinks. Yeah, it, it, it's a noise factor. That also does, we used to calm down now, that would be good. Yeah, so what we'll do is I'll jump in later, I'll get a hold of, uh, John Karate, very good. Try to bring that together, uh, which is, you know, this week.
Yes, we can iron that, and then we can present this, so. That's it, that's all I have. Thank you.
Trustee, go.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor, trustees, ladies and gentlemen. I'll be right, very quick. Uh, tomorrow, the twenty-fourth, uh, is the grand opening of, uh, Moon Village, four o'clock in the afternoon. It's gonna be quite a party. Uh, several of the restaurants are gonna provide food. I think there's gonna be music. It should be a, a really, uh, boisterous affair. Sounds really good. I checked with them the other day, uh, they're, uh, somewhere between thirty and forty percent rented. Uh, that's about a hundred units. They, all the three bedrooms are gone, the one bedrooms, I think there's one or two left. Last time I recorded that the one bedroom, Parisian, almost gone.
Yeah, I heard a little balcony.
All balconies are gone, and, but they're, they're way ahead of plan. They're, uh, somebody's moving into building, moved into building five this week. There's about fifteen residents in the building. Uh, it's, it's just phenomenally successful from their perspective. And, uh, if, if you can't make it tomorrow, just walk in, see this new plaza that they put together. It's, uh, they're working so fast, it's amazing. Uh, it really is, uh, otherworldly. It's first-class app. There is gonna be a workforce, uh, I think seventy-five units are gonna be, uh, made available to workforce folks. That's by a lottery, uh, just as Copper Beach was fun. And, uh, don't confuse workforce with Section A, okay? You gotta make a, to be, to qualify for workforce housing, you gotta make a pretty decent level of experience. That's all I have.
So, can I say, I'm sorry, there's only one more thing, David Stiles, yeah. Abe mentioned it, but I do wanna remind, uh, change, especially Wednesday, Thursday.
Yeah.
Church Street and Terrace Street, and probably a few hours on Friday morning, eleven o'clock.
Probably like two o'clock again on Friday, to coalesce, something like that.
Yeah, we actually ended up taking them down about eleven o'clock Friday morning, and, uh, well, you know, and I like to give the later time just in case. But, you know, imagine if we're gonna down, it's pretty cool.
Thank you. Thank you for keeping us informed.
David, we have a restaurant meeting, or, or...
I, I was, I was heard the discussion. I was gonna suggest to trustee Felice that as soon as I get the date, I'll talk to James Manano, the tab room, he's the chairperson. He was a little hard to get last week. He does that beer fields up in Farmville. So I'll talk to him tomorrow, and, uh, let's get the date and invite you to come down to discuss it.
You can do that. You know, what's best not to worry, after?
It doesn't matter. If we can put it together, whenever, whenever we get it together, I'll, I'll make sure. Okay.
Have it together. Now, you know. David, the issue is, you know, in some sense, the loudness of the music on Main Street now, the doors being open.
Absolutely.
And how late do we go, the, the outdoor dining, so? He can come up, up the way, manage it, control it, uh, right?
How definitely...
The way the orders are being enforced on Main Street.
Tom, can I ask a question about the Tri-Tec grand opening? Is there any kind of, like, ceremony, or is it just totally closed?
Yeah, one, one o'clock to four o'clock is, is the VIP, uh, segment, and then four o'clock to seven o'clock.
I think I heard two-thirty as the time for the actual ribbon cutting. I had heard that the time two-thirty was when they were gonna actually do, like, an actual ribbon cutting ceremony. At least that's what translates to my office, but one to four is supposed to be the, like, uh, VIP reception, and four to seven is a big community celebration, open to everybody.
I think it's gonna be hundreds of people.
Yeah, you need to register. You can register up until tomorrow. I think if you visited Tri-Tech's web, like, even a resident can register, but you still need to get a ticket to get into the, uh, into the, into the fair. You can't, you know, they, I think they, you know, they wanna at least control how many people are gonna be there. So they are asking people to register, even if it's for the four to seven. Uh, there is a website to go to register, and then you can get a ticket. And according to the website, you can do it up until three o'clock tomorrow, and still register.
It's called Eventbrite.
Eventbrite.
Yeah.
I'd like to request approval for the organizers of the Great South Bay Music Festival to hang a bat, hang a bat, a banner, or banners, banners.
Well, it depends on what they, I think they'd like to do too, but you can already have the rules.
So banners, uh, those are on Main Street, uh, to promote their event. Is greater than, um, motion?
So you're gonna have it?
Uh, I'd like to request approval to hire, hire additional summer staff in the parks department. Motion?
Thanks.
Good evening, everybody. Just wanted to let everybody know about a couple of, uh, upcoming, uh, artistic, uh, things that are happening. As you know, David mentioned, it's called Mirrors of the Past. It's gonna be at the Art Space Gallery, and that's the historic photos that were authored for Jefferson, uh, in conjunction with Historic Association. So the exhibit runs from July second through July seventeenth, but there is a reception on July twelfth from four to seven P.M. So this is in the Art Space, the main Art Space Gallery. On the same day, July twelfth, from five to seven, Patchwork Arts Council, which is located in the same building in their gallery, is having their annual members' show called Patchworks. So it's always a very nice show, brings out a lot of people, so I encourage everybody to come down and visit, uh, both exhibitions. I'm not sure what movie is playing yet, but... That's July twelfth.
Oh, July fifteenth.
But, uh, but it, to get on the subject of Plaza Mac, the movie Bell, which I saw on Tuesday first all weekend. It's only playing for three, three more days. Tuesday, seven-thirty, uh, Wednesday, five-fifteen, and Thursday, seven-thirty. You're gonna have to catch it on Netflix, but it's outstanding movie. I highly, highly recommend it. Uh, so for the last several months, Plaza Mac has been doing first-run films, and running it four times a day, seven days a week. Um, they have decided to move away from that, so that there'll be more variety during the week. Some of us would like to see a movie. So you're really gonna have to check their website, because they will be showing up to four movies a week, and kind of on a rotating schedule. Sometimes something will be in that day, and sometimes it will be in the evening, and then they're still doing their cultural series on Sunday mornings, where you can see their opera or ballet from top theater.
They're rather at the mess.
And ballet companies, yeah. And you can order brunch from Goldberg's. What they do is you come in, and they give you the menu, and then there's a warning permission, and at that time they have the bagels and lots of all that stuff, delivered from Goldberg's. So there's a lot going on in that one building. It's pretty amazing. I don't know what I did, but the whole building was there. Uh, and then I just wanna remind everybody that the Garden Club is doing their annual tour on July fifth. Uh, so I believe you can get tickets that morning, too, is that correct? Absolutely. And then, um, I know several of the people who are on the tour this year, so everyone's gonna see their, uh, very good garden tour. How many? How many years is this, you can garden tour job?
I believe, um, I'm going to say seventeen. Am I right, Tom? I think seventeen.
Great. Well, you know, you just go to the Garden Club garden, you can probably get a ticket, and then you just go around. The address is, it's all day. It's all day. Uh, and then I, I notice with, um, some of the artists from Art Space, so we're starting the planning phase of the mural, the mural walkway, uh, and your favorite artist is involved at work, so he's been with five artists, I forgot. Uh, so they're working on the sketch and the drawing, and we have to work on a little additional fundraising in addition to the thousand dollars that we, uh, granted us. And then, of course, Patchwork Arts Council's very busy, uh, planning the Patchwork Festival. It's going on Stanley's Furniture. Do you have a question, Joe?
No, fourteen, I, just a correction.
Oh, fourteen years?
Fourteen.
Okay. All right, very good. So that's gonna go with the theme of the Rotate Factory, right from Main Street all the way down, probably to the side door, because there'll be some shrubs. We might just do a black color if not there. So, uh, they'll, once we get the sketch, then we'll, we'll seek to raise the additional funds that we need, and they would hope to start the painting at the table beginning of the summer, so they could be unveiled for the Patchwork Festival. Uh, so that's all I have for this evening.
And it comes with, uh, counsel? Probably.
John Bojack, the Maxon Street, I'll keep you brief. One question, just one. Um, it's a summer, and I have a sound regulation question once again. I guess I should write that to you, because I guess it's a female. Nine-thirty, music not from the band, but from the house music at the club on Thursday. Code comes, music does go down, no tickets are issued, no warnings issued, nothing else. Is that the procedure?
No, it should, it shouldn't be. It's amplified music, so that would qualify for noise violation.
Well, uh, at, at the beginning, you say there's always a warning, right, written down?
Uh, not formally, but it generally is in a cooperative environment to try to get a warning and say, look, you gotta lower the music down. You may not be aware that this is nine oh two, or nine fifteen, or nine thirty. Nine thirty, pretty reached, that's half an hour beyond where it used to go. You know, after that, there should be a zero followers.
Okay, so, well, actually, this is the third instance. This is the first time of the three instances I've had so far this summer. With a particular club, we need to bring the name out for a second.
And code's been called three times?
No, no, no. I have to say that I've been trying to mark my differences out with the owner. However, when I have the same thing happening, week after week, after a while, it stops being reasonable. So I pull code. On the third instance, I have outdoor music, no band, after nine fifteen, nine thirty, nine forty, or something like that. Ten o'clock at night. But I noticed that code enforcement officers in this case came, asked them to lower the music, which they did, but that's not the point. I think at nine thirty, the music is on, it's outdoor music, and it requires some kind of formal notice, some form of attention. Because we, we worked on the sequence of tickets, right, and it gives an experience, and the context goes up the court. So that's why I find curious, why that, why that officer didn't issue a song.
Well, I mean, because the, the public safety officers are there to encourage compliance. That's what they want. They want compliance. So if they go there, and they have automatic compliance, and say, your music is too loud, it should be up. Again, it's in that debate we've had for many years about what that timing of discretion is. I mean, if this was eleven o'clock, this was, I think nine thirty is a little bit too far. But it, it's, it's, again, it's officer's discretion. It's nine thirty at the festival or two higher. If it's blasting out the doors, and if it's nine oh five and it's at full a hundred percent volume, that would be bad. Like, that would be a ticketable offense.
Yeah, but that's, that's what's happened. The code doesn't call for the code officer to exert his discretion. The code doesn't call for the code officer to exert his discretion each time, because then you have no record. They get wiped out each time, in that instance. Code officer A comes, says to the owner, lower your music. He does, okay? Code officer B, another week later comes and says, lower your music. He does. And this does keep going on and on. The code has, as far as I understand the code, in that instance where the officer goes, finds the music is in violation of the code, that's, it's a, it's a, um, violation.
Correct. Warning to warning.
Right, of which there's some record.
Yes.
Then the next instance is built on, because that's when you get into court. I don't want these things to happen, you understand that? But since we have that code, that seems to be what the rule should be. Not a code officer comes and says, okay, he, he's quiet today, then I have the same situation next day, and the same situation all the way through the entire summer?
Who's the code? I don't know. Oh, I, I don't know.
Well, I'm, I'm not like an X L T department.
Okay. That's it.
Right, and I have to say, as you know, that Mr. Bremer, in general, his music is off at nine-oh-five, nine-ten, I live with all of that. It's these other instances that I don't want to live with. When the music is louder from his club at nine-thirty in my TV, that's why they got the phone.
I don't play with it. But I think you should. I think that the, uh, I think that the, um, the officers know when there are repeat offenders, frequent flyers that are happening, that are flouting the wall like that. And there will be action taken if that turns out that they go there, say, on a Thursday night, and it's past nine o'clock, and he's gotta go warn them. And on Sunday, they go again.
Well, I, I was on the way with, uh, Jim and Jim Burden, and talking about how the reporting is done. And whether there are, um, at the end of the night, I'll ask Sergeant back. If, if you go down and you make that, do you note that on a, on the tour report, or whatever?
If we give a warning, yeah, we, we have a CC report, so we put everything on CC.
If you give a verbal warning, there is a CC there, something to do.
Yeah, it's a CC.
Some document is put in place. And that, is that document then made available to the other? There's other, one room to, I'll talk to Jim about it. In particular, with the noise ordinances, that at the end of the weekend, the most, the list is made for the, the next orders for the following, on the course of the following week. So, the other officers understand.
Well, there's a, there's an envelope with written warnings that, you know, we have in, uh, in the office.
Yeah, so we go back to paper trailers.
Yeah, so we can start to take, take paper trailers before that's the week. Yeah, but, 'cause there's a little written warning here. I read that report, I don't know if you did, I sent it to a member of it. It just says the music was lowered. But that missed point, is it nine-thirty?
Well, okay, I think the question to Sergeant was, when, when you get it, when, you know, educate us too, when you get a closed-out compliance, there's an indication that there's a closed-out compliance, right? There's an indication that a visit was made to that place.
Correct, and, and.
So, there's, the public safety will have the record that they had went there, it was closed-out compliance, but not necessarily the written warning was issued to the, to the place.
Okay, so they, they somehow catch that, right? Because that, 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 otherwise maybe sequence of code offices are not really.
But you, you missed exactly what I just said. Is that what you, uh, the record? Come up with a process to make sure that the officers during the course of the week, the guy that wasn't there on Monday night, when, was, that has the information to know.
That's when you go, and I'm going with you.
Yeah.
Okay.
So that he, he understands, so the officers have the information.
Right.
In particular with noise ordinances, not parking doors, not loud radios howling through Avenue, not car park the other way, but specific to noise ordinances. Because those seem to be the ones that, that we haven't raised that point.
Correct.
We'll work out a process, I'll need to jump in the course of the week, and try to work out the system. Even if it means, those are rented, and every night, everybody's giving a sheet, or in the past five days, you know, or the past week. So, we, we do exactly what you're talking about, is that it isn't a matter that, I guess, like, on hand, like, Officer A, and on Tuesdays, Officer B, and on Wednesdays, Officer C. Because A can see, you know.
Right, not, might not be talking about.
Exactly.
No, I had experiences in here, so I know the police have most sophisticated equipment in here.
Yeah.
Which is that in their car, they had a record and.
Absolutely.
Right, they knew who was there before, and really helped them. So, I think that, that, if there's something out here to do that, that's good.
Come up with a system. So, there is the cost of repetition. Then, those guarantees that will be a hundred percent, will be better than a two-point percent right now.
Right, okay.
Okay?
That sounds good to me, thanks.
Mr. Kemp.
We, Mr. Mayor, Richard Kemp, Jim Kemp. Mr. Mayor, uh, last meeting, I spoke about, uh, alcohol-related, uh, problems that nobody seemed to know anything about. And, uh, there was a lady who spoke about, uh, a serious car accident. Everybody seemed to know about that, but then when I asked about if anybody knew about somebody being hit in the head with a beer bottle on Lake Street, nobody knew, nobody knew anything at all about.
So, you're calling the lawyers?
Excuse me?
You're calling the board members out of the jail waters?
I said, nobody knew anything about, including, uh, I believe, Mr. Costello.
Because it was probably handled by Sub-P D, which doesn't report back to us, it doesn't report back to, to our public safety.
Okay, then that, that's my next question. Uh, I mean, I would, I would assume that you people, as elected officials and trustees, should act to provide a, a community that is safe to live in. Somebody being hit in the, in the head with a beer bottle could be a very serious matter.
It absolutely is.
And the fact that nobody knew anything at all about it, I, I, uh, you know, there was a time when the police gave a report here at, at these, in the, at these meetings. And I asked what, whatever happened to that? And Mr. Bojack, uh, said that the, uh, police have a meeting somewhere, uh, but my question is, why don't the police have any kind of rapport with you folks?
I have an excellent report to Sub-P D. They think it is, should be reported, they come back to me. I speak to them on a most weekly basis. And, yeah, I'm the one that normally gets the information. Now, if that happened sometime between the sixth and the sixteenth of June, they didn't call me in a few weeks.
Okay.
So, I would have knew when they were called.
All right. I provided our village clerk with pages of documents from, printouts from the patch involving DWI arrests in Patchwork, and also, there was a document regarding this man being hit in the head with a beer bottle. I provided all this documentation to the clerk. I don't know if any of our trustees saw any of it or not, but, uh, the number of DWI arrests in Patchwork is staggering, absolutely staggering. And you have got a very serious problems that you have allowed to, to grow and get worse and worse and worse. I have asked for a moratorium to drinking establishments. I was denied that, uh, request. And that's what I have to say about DWI and drinking and police matters. Now, at the last meeting, it was discussed about, uh, um, weeds and vegetation growing, uh, on other people's property. I'd like to ask our attorney, is there any, uh?
In what way, weeds and vegetation?
Bamboo.
Well, yeah, bamboo.
We reviewed the town code, we're still reviewing the town code, whether it would be applicable to, how we could make it applicable to the village, but we would consider adopting such a similar ordinance.
They, 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 the government, the resident, they, they ask me that also.
We discussed, the mayor and I discussed this, yes, and.
Okay, 'cause I, I, I'd be interested, 'cause I have some comments and concerns that I think, uh, um.
Mr. Kemp, if, if a resident calls Village Hall and says, my neighbor's grass is three feet tall, we'll go down, we'll look at it, and we'll cut. Give them a violation.
Yeah, well, actually, properties you spoke of, I could go down, and there are lawless, and Patty was right there.
So, you know, uh, that's the procedure that would have in place. But we do not have, uh, full grass police running around the village identifying which properties. We rely on residents, like, this time.
All right, well, I, I believe that the gentleman who spoke was concerned more about bamboo that grew like wildfire, and grew onto his property.
Yeah, bamboo does that.
It's grown, sorry. It's been growing somewhat.
It's a big problem. It's a big problem. And Brookhaven Town has addressed it. Um, okay, the, uh, Tri-Tech and the, uh, Lake Street, has that been paid?
Lake Street?
Yes.
Yeah.
Mr. Kemp, you slipped into my report?
Yes, Lake Street was paid.
Okay, very good.
When you go up, that's the way off.
I'm not the one saying it's paying.
Take, take a, please, move.
Okay, very good, because, uh, my wife lost a car tire, so. Okay, I also noticed that now on Jennings Avenue, there is a dotted lawn being painted. Is this something, uh, new for Tri-Tech?
That was when the town became, uh, those kids, uh, treats, they said they were making a kind of device in the front area.
It's really dope to help smother a traffic, but it's like shrinking the visual size of street, size of street.
Okay. All right, now, at the last meeting, I also asked about Steve Gill's. And I've been able to find out that Steve Gill Junior is on the village payroll as a cemetery laborer.
No. We have no Steve Gill.
Junior.
Was a person of the.
Yeah.
Well, I'd say, well, the mayor wasn't here, they'll bring the mayor up to speak. Mr. Kemp had, stop me if I get this incorrect, was the Kemp that stated that Stephen Gill was an employee of the village, who was also the volunteer chairman of the Cemetery Restoration Committee? We said, no, he is not a paid employee of the village. Mr. Kemp insisted, submit, so touched, we submitted a foil, and we submitted the response to the foil, that was young Stephen's.
His son.
Laborer.
Okay.
Which I, yes, which I wasn't even required to do, because that's not what Mr. Kemp asked for, so if I did wanna be, like, sort of, he was encouraged, it was not the secret.
Okay, and is this primarily for what, Lakeview Cemetery?
No. It does, Steve Gill has been a volunteer for about the last eight and a half years.
He did see.
He has raised almost a hundred thousand dollars towards the restoration of the Lakeview Cemetery.
He also won the Long่อน Advanced Man of the Year for his volunteer efforts.
Yeah, and he's done it on his own, and his connection to the village is, we pick up the grass cutters, he uses, he raised the money for the lawn mowers, the equipment, and he's organized volunteers.
The Louis Palace one?
Yes.
That was the store that showed it for the sales?
The, the archway. He, I think those forty thousand dollars were spent. So, he did it all on his own, has, his connection to the village is that we support his efforts through whichever little ways we can.
And his son is on the payroll?
And his son works in a forest.
I have four kids, it's two thousand and ten.
I think his, I think his son is, uh, twenty-four years old. Why, Mr. Kemp, what's, what do you think?
Because, because, uh, number, number one, Lakeview Cemetery, uh, is property of St. Paul's Episcopal Church.
Yeah, but we just told you that Mrs. Gill is not paid, his son is an employee of the village of Patchwork, what do you get, what do you?
Has a cemeteryist laborer.
No, no, it's a cemetery laborer.
A laborer, probably, a parks laborer. There's no cemetery laborer.
All the cemetery laborers.
The documents I received specifically state cemetery.
Mr. Kemp, thank, excuse me? It said a parks laborer that would be working in the parks, and I believe taking up the, it didn't specifically say the clippings, but he was gonna pick the clippings up from the grass cutting in Lakeview Cemetery. But you're absolutely right, that St. Paul's does have ownership of that cemetery, because I went to St. Paul's with Mr. Gill then, years ago, and they have a budget line for it that is exactly zero. And they granted him and his committee permission to maintain their portion of the property. And he did that with all the other parcels.
We all can agree that that.
Why is the village?
Excuse me, well, I, I think we all can agree that the job that Stephen's done at that cemetery has been remarkable, in restoring it, and getting it back to whatever's, whatever's real splendid, the fact that it's a historical place, where Hart's Tavern was there, and George Washington stopped it. I think that, that to, to come up here and to discredit Mr. Gill's, is unfair and unreasonable, and I think we should stop this as soon as possible before he continues with that. Yeah, that, this conversation is over, yeah. It's over. I think we have other people who wanna speak also, so you can kinda lift yourself up. Thank you very much, Mr. Kemp. Thank you. And first of all, the young lady next to you, she hears.
Oh, Carol, are you?
What?
She's part of our Main Street, uh, midnight of the Main Street Committee.
Oh, okay.
She's gonna make sure.
Josephine Moore, uh, since it's left there, I just wanna make a comment about the bamboo. Jack, did you say at the last meeting that you didn't think it was bamboo in Patchwork? Did I hear that?
I know it's some bamboo, it is a shit.
If, if you pass a law against bamboo, I'm in big trouble. We have bamboo behind our cottage. Now, I wage war against weeds, and I usually win on the ground. You cannot, I, we chop it, we dig it, I have a thing that I attach a little propane tank, and I burn it, and you cannot get rid of it. The more you cut it down, the more it goes to your neighbor. I don't know whether it came from my property onto my neighbor, or my neighbor, I know that we both had bamboo. You cannot win. I feel really sorry for that man, because he seems to think his neighbor can do something about it. You can't. You cannot. Bamboo wins. I'm telling you.
What, what thing, everyone should, everybody should be terrified? Dies every.
Just a little fun fact of her.
I have lot of trees in my yard, which are already bad, but they're, they're the same.
Ocean to it, Jerry.